If anyone wants to sign up for public comment, we have a sheet down here for that. Please silence your cell phones.
I can't place my chair. No, I don't work here.
Okay. It is now seven o'clock. I will now call this meeting to order. Everyone still, please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, God, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will now have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. I want to thank each and every one for coming out tonight for our meeting. We changed this month's date and we appreciate you coming out. Sometimes it's confusing, but sometimes we have no choice to do so. The agenda approval. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if you all could add item 12, closed session attorney-client privilege, like adjournment item 13.
That will be a number 12 for closed session and 13 will be adjournment. Any more changes or deletions to the agenda?
Chairman, I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry to approve the agenda. Don't hear a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wettler. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Agenda approved. Second item on our agenda, the approval for the August 2018 special in regular meeting minutes. You have those in your packet.
Mr. Chair, having previously reviewed those, I move that they be approved as submitted.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wettler for the approval of the August 2018 minutes. Second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The minutes are approved as stated. The third item is our public comment and we have a couple for public comment and there is a three-minute timeout limit on your public comment, so keep that in mind when our county manager gives you a signal. He will give you a warning before the three minutes is up, then he will tell you when your time is up. Mr. Keith, ready?
You know, I got this sludge thing going on, so it takes me a few minutes just to say "Good evening."
Good evening, Keith. We'll start the clock once you get your good evenings out of the way.
I don't want to take time to introduce myself. I think at least the commissioners and the attorney and the county manager know who I am, but I am here as a citizen and as the chair or the president of a nonprofit dealing with the Laurel Community Center organization. And our purpose is to try to get the surplus Laurel School property for a community center. Met several times with the commissioners. I thought we had a meeting scheduled on the 27th of August, but Forrest calls and says that that was canceled. But what I'd like to do is tell you that we are still interested in obtaining that property. And I know we've met with you, I've met with the school board, and we've tossed this thing around, but I just don't want this to die a slow death. And the property was declared surplus by the school board on the 22nd of January. That's eight months. And, you know, I guess I'm here to see, you know, you as a commission, we're going to discuss this, talk about it, maybe do some things, but, you know, we haven't heard anything. And of course, you know, I get calls, you know, "What are you guys doing?" Or "What's happening with the school?" Or "What's happening with the meal site?" Are we going to have a place to book this fall? Things like that. And, you know, I don't have, if you could have answered. So I guess I'll be going to the school board meeting next week, but are you guys going to accept that from the school board? Are you going to move in that direction? Are you going to let us obtain that from you? Are you going to give it back to the schools? Is there something that's holding up the process? Is there something we need to do? But we can't, we can't do a whole lot, raise funds or, you know, I mean, we're a community center organization. It's not like we're doing some other type of work that we could say, well, we're trying to get something down the line. If we don't have a center, you know, so we're sort of at a standstill in that until you give us a commitment, a firm commitment, or you get something from the schools, we're sort of, you know, just standing still. So if you could meet with us again or tell us what, you know, the last time we met, you talked about maybe getting some bids for like some safety system or something and gave us a timeframe of about six weeks, well, six weeks has passed, then of course we'd like to, you know, continue with our work. But I do want to thank you for listening to us, for meeting with us. And I know that last meeting, it was a little rough and I apologize for that in my committee. But, you know, our heart's in the right place. The building's over there. I think you've expressed you don't want it, you know, the county or the school don't want something just totally run down. So we'd like to have it. We'd like to have it for all those things on that list that I gave you in a prior meeting, cultural, recreational, boat, meal site, whatever. But thank you. Do I have any time left?
No.
All right, but thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Now, do you have any questions for me or anything that we can say now or do you want to tell me something?
We, in public comment section, we basically can't comment.
Okay. That's what I thought.
But we'll take your comments.
I thought you'd do that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Bobby Franklin.
Gentlemen, I'd like to thank you for recognizing me for just a moment. We started this process of getting an organization together just after the school closed to get this done. And this has been not only a years' process, but it has been a three-year process now. And I think as an adult that there's been ample time to make some decisions. We haven't asked for any money, anything. We've asked for the property to be used as a community center. If the board can help in any way, fine. If they can't find, as I've told each of you, I have the capabilities of taking care of the sewer. We have excellent people on our committees that can write grants, do whatever's necessary to make this work. We don't expect anything from the county commissioners at all, except a blessing to give us the building. And I would appreciate it if you could accept the building and then let's sit down together and put a contract that is livable with all and that will help our community in the long. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
That will conclude our public comment section. Fourth item on our agenda is Mr. Cameron Waldrop.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Waldrop and I was the youth delegate for the 2018 Youth Voice Conference, which was held in conjunction with your association meeting. I'm just extremely grateful for this wonderful opportunity to get a better sense of what happens in county government. And this conference also taught me several different skills that would not be taught within a classroom setting, such as communication and teamwork skills. But I really appreciate that what I learned there can be directly applied to my life on a day-to-day basis with how I interact with people or how I work with people. Well, at this conference, we participated in some really interesting activities that demonstrated the ideals that they were teaching us. The first activity was called the Ball in the Tarp Activity. Basically, they had a ball, a tennis ball, and they had a tarp that had five holes cut into it, one in each corner and one in the middle. And every one of us in the group had to take a place on the tarp and we had to make the ball go around every hole in the tarp without falling through the hole or falling off the tarp, which was extremely complicated without us working together. And through a little bit of work, we learned how to properly communicate with each other so we can make that happen. Later on that evening, we did the Real Colors Assessment, which was answering a few questions and looking at a couple of pictures. You learn how you fit into a team scenario. You're assigned a color and the four colors are orange, gold, blue, and green. An example of the gold would be somebody that's extremely organized, sticks to a schedule. Whereas an orange would be kind of a more on-the-fly kind of person, is really playing things out. Greens are typically more reserved kind of people, while blues are kind of more welcoming and inviting and more talkative. Personally, I'm a green and I found that the characteristics that described the green personality type suited me very well. They're kind of curious, have lots of questions, and like to think about possibilities for things. Then Saturday morning, I had the pleasure of meeting breakfast with our county manager, Mr. Gilliam, and we talked about how he got involved with county government and if I decided one day that I wanted to take that route, he told me some things that I would need to do in order to make that happen. But the most eye-opening experience was the bottom-line activity, which was a board game that put us in the position of county commissioners. We were given different options on how to balance the county budget and they would give us a scenario and we would have to figure out where we would make cuts or where we would add things to make the budget balance. But a real twist on the game that I hadn't really thought of until this experience was the media reporters. They would come around to each table while we were talking, debating on whether we were going to take a cut of budget here, a cut of budget there, and they would take those little details that we said somewhat out of context and when they would report back to the group, they would kind of give them a negative connotation.
Media never does that.
Really, we were just trying to make things that would be the least damaging to the community and they would come around and just kind of listen to what we're talking about, those issues. But overall, it was a very amazing experience. The simulation of the county budget makes me aware of the challenges faced by commissioners and how tough their jobs can be in prioritizing things when creating a budget. There are factors I've never even considered until going to this conference. And the Real Colors Assessment, which is very helpful, will help me work on a team more effectively with making decisions throughout my entire life and it's really helped me see how different people play a role in building a team together. And I'm thankful for all the wonderful people that I've met while at this conference. And I would like to thank you for listening to my recount of my experience at the Youth Voice Conference.
Thank you. Thank you for going.
Mr. Chairman.
Cameron represented, actually compelled tonight. He represented our county very well at the event. I didn't get to get by the budget simulation, kind of wanted to see that, but didn't get a chance to do that. Very good young man from our county and excited about seeing what he does next. Invited in to all sorts of meetings he's so far. He's got better things to do, which I don't mind him about.
Well, guess what? If you ever get elected county commissioner, you have to take that class all over again. So you've already got a leg up on us.
Okay. Fifth item was common home.
Hello, hello, hello.
Hello, Donnie.
Northerner. I'd be fast. Thank you, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to present this idea to you all and get your feedback on it. I'm wearing kind of two hats today. One is I'm a member of the Economic Development Board and the other is I am the current president of the Downtown Marshall Association. So back in the spring, I was approached by an organization called Cycle NC. They said that they were interested in having Marshall serve as the host site for a bicycle event. It is called the Weekend Mountain Ride or Bicycle Ride and it would be the sixth annual held in August of 2019. Since spring, I've had numerous conversations with some people. I've researched the organization. I've looked at the events that they hold. I even went down and brought Rick with me down to a site visit to see their current year event to make sure I had a full understanding of what this would entail if we were to be the host site this year. And hopefully tonight we can get moving forward. So a little bit of background on Cycle NC. That is a nonprofit organization with a mission to promote physical fitness and health, to provide economic impact and publicity to rural communities across the state while showcasing the state's beauty, scenic attractions, and cultural diversity. Of course, I hone in on that economic impact and publicity to rural communities, which is important. So they put on three different events every year. They've been doing this for 20 years. The big event that they do that most people know is the Mountain to Coast. It's a week-long ride. They do a, in the stream, they do a coastal ride at various locations over in the coast. They get 2,000 riders for that one. And then they do this mountain ride. So this is the youngest of the three events that they do, but they do have 20 years of experience of putting these on. So I think we were approached to do this in part because of our success with the USA Cyclan Collegiate Championships. I also thank the Rotary Club of Madison County putting on the Hot Doggett every year. That has gotten some cred. There's some other events that come into Madison County because of what they see here. It's beautiful. So we've got beautiful views. We've got tough climbs. We've got screaming descents and the cyclists love that kind of stuff, right, Donnie?
Sure do.
Sure do. So this year, the event was held down in Tryon. It was in early August. I'm going to give you a little bit of stats on that event. There was a lot of rain leading up to the event and it was forecasting to rain that weekend. They only had 322 participants, which is better than what Hot Doggett gets, but they came from 14 different states. Normally, they would get about 400 for this event. We had 70 to 75 that stayed in cabins, Airbnbs, hotels, those kinds of things. There were 12 to 15 small RVs, not big monster motorhomes, but the little teardrop and pop-ups. There were 15 or so people that stayed in the Presbyterian Church across from the park in Tryon, had an indoor camping area in the fellowship hall, people staying on air mattresses. And they had 60 or so tents. These are people that want to come here, they want to ride the event, but they want to also stay in tents. The rest of the folks either live nearby or stay with family and friends. So when I went down to Tryon, one of the things I wanted to do was to talk with the organizing, the local organizing group in Tryon. It's called Our Carolina Foot Hills. That would be the equivalent of the Downtown Marshall Association. And while I was standing there talking to them, looking at their registration process, we walked over, Rick and I walked over to the tent area and I was thrilled to bump into a friend of mine from Madison County who was there setting up his tent and I was like, "What are you doing here?" So I knew he was a cyclist, but I didn't realize he was doing these kinds of events. So Terry is a retired neurologist. He lives here in Madison County. I've known him for about six years and I asked him to say just briefly a little bit about his experience with the event.
Thanks, Connie. Yeah, I'm a resident at Madison County and I'm also a participant in four of these Cycle North Carolina rides, so I can give a little bit of perspective from a participant's view. As she said, there is a Mouse to the Coast ride every year. I've done two of those. And then last year, the Mountain Ride was in Bison City, disappeared there, and then of course in Tryon. And I guess I must like it because I'm signed up for the Coastal Ride in April, which is sold out every year, so you've got to sign up for that. So nothing but great recommendations for the organization and the events they put on. Having been in North Carolina for, lived here for more than 40 years, I've never been to Tryon. So this event led me to Tryon and this event, I think they get better each time in my experience. I've had four events and they continuously get better. They take their feedback seriously and they modify. And I didn't have hosted, right, I didn't really have anything that I wanted to change. The registration was great. They've got a great website. Camping is all laid out very well organized. Parking is good. The rides are fantastically marked and very, very well thought out. And in this instance, we had shuttles, which were on time and worked very well. Most of these sites are two and a half, three miles outside of town. If we hosted this event in Madison County, Marshall, just walk right across the bridge, I'd be in need for a shuttle. You'd have shuttles to go to other events and communities, but most people would just walk across it. I think that would be an extra bonus that people would really, really like. So and at the end of the event, you get a T-shirt and I'll just share you this with the iconic Tryon horse from Main Street. And I would really be excited if we could have the next year's T-shirt for the CNC Mountain Ride, show a nice view of some Madison County scenery. And I think it would be great for the county to host this. Highly recommended.
Thank you.
And you, and yourself. So with the Tryon event they produced, this is the marketing, to let people know about the event, they produced, I heard 40,000 of these brochures. And if you open it up on the inside in the center, there is a phenomenal write-up about Tryon and about things to do in the area. This is excellent opportunity to market Marshall and Madison County and this is at no cost to us. Cycle NC puts these events on, they come into the host city, they work with an organizing committee, but there is no expense on our part. So that is really good and important to us. In addition to these 40,000 that they produced and mailed all over the country, they are on Facebook, they have 5,000 followers, they are on Twitter and Instagram and Snapchat and all that social media stuff. So they really do a nice job professionally marketing the host location. So based on, Terry mentioned that they do a survey, asking the cyclists some information. They ask economic questions. One of them was, "How much did you spend when you were here in this location?" Some people respond. We know that it's at least $100 per participant. It's probably more than that. Not everyone reports everything. They don't think about the gas that they stopped and got when they were there in the county. So if we get 400 cyclists and they spend $100 on average, that's a lot of money coming into our community for just that one weekend. But there's other economic impact, like Terry said. They went to Tryon, he wants to bring his wife back because he thought it was such a cute town. He had never been down there. So it's, there's some long-term impact that we can't really define at this point. But all this, to bring us to the point, one of the strategies that Cycle NC has is they like to have the tent camping right there in town. They've done it sometimes, but they didn't get to do it in Tryon because it wasn't a campsite. We have an island in the middle of the river in the mountains, which is a great marketing opportunity in and of itself. And if we can allow them to use this for the campers, for the tents, that would be a great opportunity because then, as Terry said, they'll just walk across the street, they'll go to restaurants, they'll go to the shops, they'll stay there for the evening, so Friday and Saturday night. So I've gotten approval from the Town of Marshall for the tent camping to be on the island, for their own part of the island. I've talked with and gotten approval from Marshall High Studios to do the RV camping in the parking lot. And I've talked with and gotten approval from the Marshall Presbyterian Church to do the indoor camping in their fellowship hall on Friday and Saturday night. And so now I'm coming to you, the county commissioners, to see if you would be willing to support and approve the tent camping on the island.
So the church has approved it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Boy, I'm looking at this mount. Is that our property there?
Who knows?
Well, we either know that it's ours or the town. And since both of us are going to approve it, we all be okay.
Some of it's in question, but one or the other.
From a legal standpoint, we're covered. And I see that they, it looks like they bring their own bath houses and restroom facilities and whatnot too, so that looks good.
Yeah, there were like a dozen porta-johns. I know the rule of thumb is like one per 10 or 12. They had showers. It was really amazing. They had a charging station for all the cell phones and for the gizmos. When you're riding your bicycle, you've got to have your ride with GPS and you want to charge it. They had a charging station. It was really very first-class. Average age of the cyclist, by the way, was 58, which is good, unlike the USA Cyclan where we had 18 to 20-year-olds. These people have a little bit of extra money to spend, sadly.
Well, Connie, I want to thank you and all the other folks that are involved because I know this probably wouldn't even be here unless it were the efforts of an awful lot of people in promoting Marshall and promoting Madison County. And these types of events give this wonderful place a lot of public exposure and obviously contribute to our economy. So, Mr. Chairman, if it is in order, I would move that we approve the use of Blanahan Island, what and any parts that we own for the use of this event. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Wettler, for the approval of the use of the property on Blanahan Island for this bike. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Let the games begin. There's going to be a lot of questions that we're going to go through and they're going to start announcing in December, so between now and then, my plan is to make sure we've got the contract in hand, we understand, all the top of Donnie, make sure that we understand everything is laid out and there are no surprises, because I don't like surprises. Thank you very much.
Connie, thank you for what you do to promote our county. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, Doctor. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Melanie Morgan.
Oh, good evening. You might have heard that we won a little award. So I had the honor of traveling to Springfield, Illinois, to accept the small, let me get this right, Best Small Library in America Award. It's obviously a very prestigious award. It was the only one. So my staff, friends, trustees, and of course the community are just completely excited about this opportunity that we have been given. With the award, of course, becomes as a librarian...
I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Wettel for the approval of the use of the property on Blanahasset Island for this bike. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Let the games begin. There's going to be a lot of questions that we're going to go through and they're going to start announcing in December. So between now and then, my plan is to make sure we've got the contract in hand, we understand all the top of Donnie, make sure that we understand everything is laid out and are no surprises because I don't like surprises either. Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do to promote our county. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thanks Terry.
Thanks Doctor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Melanie Morgan.
Good evening. You might have heard that we won a little award. So I had the honor of traveling to Springfield, Illinois to accept the small best, let me get this right, Best Small Library in America Award. It's obviously a very prestigious award. It was only one. So we're, my staff, friends, trustees, and of course the community are just completely excited about this opportunity that we have been given. With the award, of course, becomes as a librarian, the biggest thing you ever want is to be on Library Journal. So I feel like I would just like to stop my career now and retire. But we did get the cover of Library Journal, so Best Small Library in America. And we will, they had, they sent this with us and we'll have one at each of our libraries. And it also comes with a $5,000. I've already spent most of that. So it's been a great experience. When I was presenting the award, we had eight over, I had to give speech over without 800 people, so that was a little nerve-wracking. Afterwards though, I got to do a presentation about how we won this award. And it was really cool because I got to explain to other librarians what we did to stand out within the country. And so a lot of that really becomes from the partnerships that we have in this community, the outreach initiatives that we do, of course literacy and our technology. And so we could not do this and be successful without those outreach initiatives and partnerships. And so I'm very thankful to the school, Madison County Schools, AB Tech Community College, Mars Hill University, all of our friends and trustees, and all of those different organizations who help us each day to be successful. And again, of course, the community for all of their support. So if you have any questions, I was going to do a PowerPoint presentation tonight, but that's okay. But do you have any questions about the process or anything about the award?
No, only it's, simply put, it's outstanding. It represents the community, represents all of your hard work, the hard work of literally dozens and dozens of people in this community for a long time. We know in the county, those of us that were, how good the library is, it's now nice for the whole country to know how good the library is here. And it represents the quality of life for Madison County that sometimes we tend not to recognize our quality of life here. And I want to thank you, I want to thank the friends, I want to thank your staff because this is an award very well deserved. And thank you very, very much.
Yes, thank you for that.
I'll give one more thing out. So during the presentation, Dr. Hayden, who is the Library of Congress librarian, she actually recognized Madison County Public Libraries and myself and all of her staff for all of the hard work, which is tremendous. So in any case, hello, good evening and thank you for letting me present.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to ask for a signature for the Order of Collection for 2018 Taxes for Madison County. This is required by general statute and it's just an order for me to collect taxes. So if you can approve that, I appreciate that.
And Donnie, the obvious question, you have reviewed this and it's in order.
She's got to do that.
Thank you everybody. Aware of it, if someone makes the motion, please include the general statute number.
I've done too many motions. Well, I'll make the motion since everybody, I'll move to that we approve the attached Order of Collection for the 2018 taxes as required by North Carolina General Statute 105-321 in order to officially direct our tax corps to collect those taxes.
I'll second that motion. Okay, we have a motion for the Order of Collection of 2018 Taxes as required by General Statute 105-321. Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you Lord. Thanks Lord.
Next up is our attorney, Mr. Donnie Law.
Mr. Chairman, there is a, in your packet, there is a proposed contract for the services of your DSS attorney. It's a contract that we fund that, so as a general rule of accounting, it's a party that enters into a contract. You did this last year when you hired Danny Hockaday to be county attorney, not county attorney, but DSS attorney. It runs for the fiscal year. He performed those services last year. He made an offer to perform the services for this fiscal year under the same terms and conditions of the contract last year. I believe this proposal came before the DSS Board. It was vetted out, discussed, met with Mr. Hockaday, and I think that board voted to continue with his services. And I received a letter or an email from Ms. Harris that stated that. So therefore based upon that, I prepared a contract as last year except for change of dates. That's what's in your packet. And Mr. Hockaday signed it last month, I believe. This is your first making since he executed. So it is on for your approval. I believe there are two members of the DSS Board here and you can verify that the DSS Board has reviewed it and Mr. Hockaday has continued performing those services during the first two or three months of this fiscal year. So if you have any questions about that contract, I'll be more than happy to answer. It's numerous pages long, probably 20 or 30 pages. That is a form that's required by the state. It has all kinds of certifications of Mr. Hockaday not having any tax liens and he has no conflicts of interest and comply with various federal statutes. But those are all requirements that have to be in it. The pertinent terms are that he will perform all services required for DSS protective services work, all of their appeals, and all of their adult services. He does not represent the DSS Board. He just does basically their juvenile court work.
Excuse me.
Any questions on this contract?
His expenses have already, are already kind of going in the budget, so we're good to go on that.
Okay. Mr. Laws, Mr. Gentry and I sit on that board and we have reviewed this and voted.
I believe in this contract based upon that, if I can get a motion from you folks to approve it, then if you do approve it, I can, would authorize your chairman to sign it and I have the contract with me tonight and we can do it before we leave.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Gentry for the contract for Madison County Department of Social Services, legal representation for Daniel Hockaday. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Brooke?
Hello. Hey Brooke. I've got several personnel I was here tonight. So the first is Facility One Worker Position. This is in our maintenance department. This is the entry level position. You don't really have to have any specialized skills. You're going to do a little bit of everything with this position. So we did interviews, this round went a lot faster than the last round. We were really excited to have several qualified applicants. And ultimately, the department head and I are recommending Mr. Edmund Bell Buchanan, Edmund Buchanan, be authorized as a Facility Worker One.
I'm making a motion that we accept that recommendation. Mr. Edmund Buchanan as Facility Worker One.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion for the employment of Edmund Buchanan for Facility Worker One by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, the second position that I've got tonight is the Animal Shelter Worker Two. Now this is the weekend position. It's 10 hours a week, no benefits. It works every weekend. So it's kind of where we find ourselves continually posted for. This time we're really excited because we actually got a previous animal shelter volunteer that applied. So we were really lucky this time. So I'm asking for the approval of Ms. Alexis Nix as Animal Shelter Worker Chief.
Mr. Chair, I nominate, or I move that we hire Alexis Nix as Shelter Worker Two.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wettel, second by Commissioner Gentry for the employment of Alexis Nix for Animal Shelter Worker Two. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay. So the next thing moving right along is in our Nutrition Department. So as you know, we had outsourced the preparation and cooking of our meals for all of our senior centers and meal sites, and we brought that back in-house. And so tonight I need to do two things in that department. I need to ask for your approval for a part-time assistant cook is Gloria Verhae. And I also need to ask at the same time for your approval to change the hours for the part-time head cook, still part-time, from 20 to 25 hours. We've been really pleased in that department since bringing it in. And this, this final move of getting the assistant cook hired and increasing those hours is going to get us right where we need to be.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the recommendation of our HR directive.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Wettel for the hiring of the Gloria Verhae for part-time assistant cook and the increase on the hours as stated. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Lastly, thank you. Lastly, I have in our Health Department, a part-time 10-hour-a-week position for a Registered Nurse Community Health Educator. This position is going to work in our community, leading meetings and collecting data for our community health consortium. So this is, we have to do all sorts of reports, state of the health report that we do every year. This person's going to really do a lot of data collection and leading that process. And so for the part-time Registered Nurse Community Health Educator, I am recommending Jody Brazel.
Mr. Chair, I move that we hire Jody Brazel as a RN Community Health Educator.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Wettel, second by Commissioner Rice for the employment of Jody Brazel for a Registered Nurse Community Health Educator. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you Brooke.
All right, Gloria.
Good evening.
Hey Gloria.
I have three things for you tonight. First, we're going to start with the August 2018 financial statements. You'll see on here, similar to last month, if we pull out all the money that we know that we're going to pay out for the end of the year, we are currently sitting with no money in the bank, but we know that's not true because we've promised funds that we're not going to pay until April, May, June as part of our encumbering system. This includes 4042 funds for the school loan, the jail loan, the forward essential loan, Medicaid cost settlement, and other things that we've encumbered in our budget. If we just look at total money in the bank, unrestricted money is $5.8 million. We have started to see some tax revenues come in, but the total unassigned unrestricted is a negative $200,000. So we have money that we've promised that we haven't collected yet, but we know we will get it in before that money is due. We are sitting at 16.67% of the year is over at the end of August. If you look at the summary page for the month in August, we have spent out 634,000 more than we've taken in. This is normal for this time of year. And again, tax collections haven't started coming in at this point. And you can see that's kind of similar all the way down between landfill fund as well has spent out more money, 26,000 more than it's taken in. Over, as far as the budget goes, like I said, tax revenues have just started coming in in September. They are running a couple weeks behind compared to last year. That could be as simple as one mortgage company deciding to wait two more weeks before they pay out their taxes on the mortgages, they hope. You know, we're watching the trends and making sure that they're going to catch up. And I know Lori's being diligent on that. And then also in August, we paid out the 4042 funds that the school requested, that 900 and?
33.
$933,000 of 4042 money. Last year, we didn't pay that out until October. So that's, those are the big differences for the month of August versus last year in August. Any questions on this financial statement?
For all the leases.
Yes, sir.
People who owe us money.
As of last week, they were.
Any questions?
Moving on to our checks. So attached to that also is a list of vendors that we've paid for the month of August. I have tried to, again, detail out the ones that I went, I don't remember what that was for. For your help, there was the 2017 home grant was paid out to the Community Housing Coalition, $13,000. We started paying out our collection center leases in August. Obviously 4042 funds that I already mentioned.
Any questions on expenses here?
Gloria, do you have an update on the year end for 2018?
I do. I'm going to do that for next. That's okay. Any questions on the checks? Okay. Update on 2018, so last week we received our sales tax money that was for the money that retailers collected in June, and that's the last month that we have to roll back to last year. That, that put $356,000 back into last year. We also received some Medicaid whole harmless money that we didn't anticipate. There's some really complicated calculation they try to explain to me every time on how they come up with that, but it has to do with the Medicaid claims that go through the Health Department versus the whole state and some sales tax component of that as well. So taking those two things into consideration, I'm anticipating in the audit to show that we had a $70,000 profit for last year, gain for last year. I think there might be a few minor tweaks from the auditor, but I think that's a good realistic number. I know we had some budget constraints last year, forced budgeted very conservatively and that helped a lot. And we had some things come up during the year that we had to adapt to and tighten our reins in a little bit for money that we anticipated that didn't come in and other things that we had to spend. So I'm, I'm very pleased that this number, you know, is where it is, so.
Well, when we did the numbers in July, year in June, I know there was probably some anxiety out there.
There was some anxiety here too. and other things that we had to spend. So I'm, I'm very pleased that this number, you know, is, is where it is, so.
Well, when we did the numbers in July, or year-end June, I know there was probably some anxiety out there.
There was some anxiety here, too.
The numbers looked like.
I like things looking like.
And for everyone's benefit, I appreciate you doing that. And I appreciate the newspaper being here tonight to report that, that we ended in a positive. And hopefully, the audit will represent that likewise. Thank you.
On to budget amendment number three. It's a large budget amendment. So overall, this budget amendment is increasing revenues and expenses by $526,000. The bulk of these revenues, 205,000 came in from the sale of the breakaway properties that closed. We received some additional money for senior center grants. That's in there as well, as well as in the transportation. They received some grant money there. They received funding for their capital, for their vans, that we had already put our county dollars in. But now we're putting in the federal and state money in for that. So that is the bulk of all that money. With these increases, we have increased expenses accordingly. But we are also putting some money into contingency with this budget amendment. Most of that comes from this breakaway sale because we know that we've tried to save these special things that we're selling and not use them for ordinary expenses because you can't rely on them from year to year. So this budget amendment is putting 160,000 into contingency.
Putting 160 in contingency?
Yes.
Okay. And refresh my memory and force, since you'd serve on the same board as I do on this one, six vans is what we asked for, was it not?
Yes.
And I believe we received funding for six. Two of them are supposed to be all-wheel-drive handicap minivans that don't exist. So Dee has gone back to them to say, seriously, guys, but this van doesn't exist. They don't make an all-wheel-drive handicap minivan. They just don't exist, or I would have one myself. So they're working on trying to figure out what to do with the other two vans of money and what they can reallocate those towards as hopefully two other vans that will fit.
They don't have like a Toyota Sienna or something that all-wheel drive?
Can't do all-wheel-drive handicapped.
Really? I guess because of the chassis.
The chassis, they can't cut the chassis.
Makes sense, didn't think about it.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I'm good.
Any questions on budget amendment three?
What was the total on that again? She said five.
Yeah, it's on page two at the very bottom, 526,000. It's getting added to both revenue and expense.
Again, with 160,000, five in the contingency. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve budget amendment three.
Okay. I have a motion for the approval of budget amendment three. Do I hear a second? I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the approval of budget amendment three, raise your right hand.
And the last thing I have for you, somewhere in here, extra papers, is the tax releases, tax releases and refunds for August. They're pretty short this month, so I'm really excited about that.
Okay. I have those on their computer and in front of them. The property releases for August 2018. Get it, though. There we go. Questions? Rather short list for the refunds. I move that be approved as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of the refunds and releases for the property taxes for August 2018. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Rhea.
Thank you.
I think it's worthy to make a point that several of those are granted elderly exemptions and disabled exemptions. So contrary to popular belief, it does happen. Pretty regular.
Good evening. Just a few updates. Rhea did talk to you about the year-end 2018 budget numbers. And I think that's a, it's basically a whole even gain. And it's good that it's where it is. Budget was very, always a very conservative calculation. And then, as you remember, when we found out about quarter of the way through the year that we weren't housing, we were only housing about half the number of federal inmates that we budgeted, we had to cut out 335,000, 335,000 throughout the year. So thankfully, we did that. Thankfully, we paid attention. And a number of departments had to hold off on some things and change the way they were doing things for the remainder of the year in order for us to spend the year with positive balance. These things fluctuate. You know, last year, we had a very good year. The year before, year ending in '17, very good year with prior year's taxes, those sorts of things. So we actually had well over $100 surplus. Those things come and go. But this is the place to be. As we start this year, things are looking pretty good. But it's too early to sort of tell how things go. We do watch things throughout the year and try to make sure that we always begin and end that, begin with a balanced budget and any amendments throughout the year maintain that, that our actual money spent does not exceed the revenue that comes in for that particular year, unless it's going toward a one-time project that you all have prepared and planned. The community forum on opioid abuse that was hosted by the health department in this room at the end of, it was August 27th, which was the reason that we canceled our work session for that week, was very well attended, 81 were in attendance at that event. Very good presentation by our health department, good panel of folks who spoke at different times and then answered questions as a panel. So you had discussions about the, sort of the science behind addiction, the treatments that are available today for opioid addiction. Coy Phillips talked about what law enforcement's doing, carrying Narcan and EMS doing the same thing and how that's saving lives in our county. Some discussion from family members. Two parents who lost their son to an overdose. Very good event that I think was positively received by those in attendance who have been coming to a number of these things for three or four years surrounding this issue in our county. And a lot of the sessions at the commissioners' conference right before that were focused on this issue. And everyone that I was able to attend, we are doing, we're following the best practices in our county of what can be done. It's not something that anyone can fix. But we have everyone at the table discussing the problem, looking at how, how you do things differently, chip away at that. Because if you're helping with one life, if you're helping turn around one person, it's worth it. So very proud of what our health department's doing, very proud of the cooperation that exists among various agencies and citizens in our community to try and address that issue in our county. And that brings us to the next item, which is the drug court memorandum of understanding with Yancey and Mitchell counties. That was also shared, the concept was shared with those who were in attendance at the community forum. As you all know, you included funds in your budget to pay for a third of a coordinator for adding drug court services for these three counties in our individual district. As we further examine this, the three county managers, we recommend contracting with the Restorative Justice Center, which is a nonprofit in Boone that is currently providing the service for Otava and Avery counties. They know what they're doing. They're ready to get somebody in there quicker than we can. They can handle absences better than we can. And they know, they've got the expertise to supervise the position. It would also lead to, instead of us having a third of a position, the same amount of money, it sounds like Avery County's person would go have time to add to them, and they would handle Avery, Mitchell, and a half, half position would be added for Madison and Yancey. So it will end up being better. I recommend that you approve this MOU, which will also authorize me to work with the other two county managers, Nathan Bennett, Yancey County, really leading that portion of it in finalizing the contract with the nonprofit. We would maintain that. We've asked that we have veto power over employment. We don't want to be involved in a super division of the three counties. We want to make sure that whoever's in that role fits those counties. And especially that's, mostly that's so if there are problems with a person, we have a way to be able to address things. And Mr. Laws, he's written all this and negotiated and been involved on the Yancey County side as well. He may have things to add.
And Forrest was exactly right. Forrest and Nathan and Kathy in Mitchell County, I think, have met and talked about this at length. And the key to this is getting a coordinator who, that they drive this program, working with everybody else. And we were trying to figure out how to set it up because it could be an employee or it could be an independent contractor. And we first thought about how can three counties hire an employee? And who's going to pay the insurance? Who's going to be responsible for discipline? And then we came up with this contract theory and, and got in touch with the, with the group that's providing the services. And, and things have sort of fallen into place as quick as we wanted them to do. But there's a possibility of maybe even implementing this drug court as early as October the 1st. This MOU was on all three counties' agendas for September. We just happened to be the county that met the latest. Madison, Mitchell, and Yancey have already approved this. As this was being circulated, there is also a contract for those services with restorative justice that is being sent to them as a proposal. And this afternoon, Nathan Bennett contacted me back, and we've heard a response back from them. So hopefully, we can have all of these things in place in the next week and put everybody to work. And I know that the respective sheriffs, the probation officers, the county managers, the clerks of court, they're all ready to move forward with this. And then I think it would be money that is well spent. Now, having said that, Forrest has proofread my MOU, and I think his mother may be an English teacher. So I've spelled the word principal, which is by spell check with an A-L, and it should be an L-E. And I have, I have put the Carolina Administration Office of the Courts, I've left out office. So with those modifications, I would recommend that you sign this MOU.
It stuck out pretty fast.
He told me that his mother would probably disown him. He would point those out. Thought I'd pass that along.
Good proofreading skills there. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, with permission of the other members of the board, I would like to move to authorize the execution of the MOU and to authorize the county manager or county attorney to work with the counterparts in Yancey and Mitchell counties on the execution of the contract restorative justice.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gentry for the approval of the memorandum of understanding for our drug court. Do I hear a second?
Please.
I have a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Do I need questions on that?
Well done.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good job. Appreciate it.
We need to do the motion for adjournment session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we return to closed session for attorney-client privilege, general statute 14331811.
Second that motion.
We have a motion for closed session for attorney-client privilege, second by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are now in closed session.